Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Town of Brookfield Select Board meeting for March 16th, 2023. Please rise and say the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So we've got announcements, reminder from the Highway Department, winter parking ban is effective through April 1st. There shall be no parking on any streets between the hours of 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM. Vehicles in violation will be ticketed and towed at owner's expense. Snow or ice removed from driveways, sidewalks, or private property shall not be plowed, shoveled, or blown across any public way, street, or roadway. Can I get a report on the approved warrants?
Make a motion to approve the warrants as follows. FY 2318, accounts payable $1,582,041.38. FY 2318 payroll $187,240.86. FY 2318 withholding $29,919.75. And then voiding the check for FY 2318 of $10,000.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second for discussion.
Okay.
I'm just curious that the AP warrant seems very high, at $1 million? Am I misremembering?
No, I didn't see anything huge that went through that was abnormal, but there was probably a large insurance payment involved.
Okay.
And actually, we are paying off the things that went through was the fire truck because of the borrowing.
Mm-hmm.
So we're paying off all of those, the fire truck, the Heller House, the police station. So those are all included in the payoff from the borrowing.
Okay, so these are transactions involved with the debt we're incurring?
Yes. Well, these are the transferring of the debt. So we've got to pay off how we're currently funding them, so that...
Right, and these are all expenses, so the offsetting income from the borrowing is not shown?
Right.
Okay. What's void?
I'm sorry, oh, void. So when we did the borrowing for the fire truck, the bank made an error on the borrowing. We had retained $10,000 to pay down the debt. They didn't borrow the full amount, they borrowed 10,000 less. So instead of paying that debt down, we're voiding the check to pay the debt down and now doing a ban to make up the $10,000 difference at no charge. The bank made the mistake, so they're doing all of this at no charge. So we're just taking that 10,000 and we're switching it over to paying off the ban.
Okay.
So, and I have the ban in the packet, but...
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm all set.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, first item on the agenda is Congregational Church request to use the town hall in case of rain for their Vacation Bible School. So historically, we've pretty much blanket approved any requests to use the town hall for any non-corporate purposes, basically. So can I get a motion relative to that?
Make a motion to approve the request to use the town hall by the Congregational Church in the event of rain for Vacation Bible School.
Second?
Any discussion? Any concerns? I know that...
No, I don't. I know there's precedent for this. They've done this before.
Yep.
And so, as such, there's no reason to deny it now, so...
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, contracts, entertainment for the 350th celebration.
Okay, so some of these contracts cannot be done as written. The DJ contract is fine.
Okay.
Because there's no deposit.
Okay.
But the ones that have, we can do a deposit for a rental space, also fine.
Okay, so that one's okay.
That's not an issue. But the two, there should be two for McGann Marching Band.
Yeah.
Those both have that the bill has to be paid prior to them actually coming out and doing it, and that absolutely can't happen. Because we can't prepay. We can't pay for something we didn't receive. We can use it to reserve a space, but we cannot pay a total bill prior to them actually performing. So the way they've handled the other concerts in town is they cut the check and the committee that's paying holds a check and pays them after the performance.
Okay.
Which is what Lori said that she would agree to doing. So we just need to take that piece of this out of here. So if you would approve this other than with the amended language, then I can sign it for you, once it's completely finished or corrected.
Should we just put payment will be available immediately following the event and do the check?
Nope. Because they're going to be the ones amending the contract, and I haven't seen what they're going to put in for the clause.
Got it, okay.
So as long as it doesn't require prepayment...
Right, okay, so we need a motion to approve these contracts with the one stipulation that Section 3 of the McGann Marching Band contract be amended to reflect payment after received services. Is that what you're asking us to make a motion?
Yes.
All right, then I move that we approve the concert with DJ services by Glenn for $675. The contract with the Brookfield Rod and Gun Club rented their space on 9/29 for $350. And that we approve the contract with McGann Marching Band for their performance on September 17th, 2023, with the contract to be amended in Section 3, saying that they will receive payment after performance.
Second?
Before you vote, if you're going to second it, then...
For discussion, yeah?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
All right.
So I just realized the Rod and Gun Club, one is also looking for it to be paid. The rental fee is due 30 days prior to the event, so we'll have to work with them as well.
Okay. I move that we modify the motion to require the Rod and Gun Club to accept, to receive payment after rental, or...
We can do the deposit, but we can't pay the whole thing 30 days prior to the event.
Receive the balance from the event.
Yeah, that we not pay them the balance until after the event.
That works, yeah.
Is what I was trying to say.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay.
All in favor?
Hold on a minute?
Sure.
I just want to figure out something here.
Absolutely.
And I could be completely wrong, but I feel like that wasn't the amount that was agreed upon. Do you go offhand, or...
No, I do not. Not for the Rod and Gun Club or for the band?
No, for the, well, I was just looking at the car show, and then...
What's the car show got to do with anything?
That's the DJ Glenn contract.
Yeah, the DJ.
Oh, okay.
He's...
I've seen nothing in relation to the car show as far as what's approved and what I've seen the Easter egg hunt and the ice cream social. Those are the two things that I have information on.
Okay, no, it's correct, $75. But another just point of... Clarification, like, so for the 50's dance, so they have that approved with a fee, but they never voted on the fee? Because I was at that meeting. Are they supposed to vote on the fees?
Yes.
Yeah, we don't have the minutes.
So I don't know, they don't have to vote them individually? They can give a lump sum and say, you've got this much money for a 50's dance?
Yeah, I know that.
Was that the 350th committee, or was that the Cultural Council that's doing it?
That was the Cultural Council that we did a joint meeting with.
Okay. So if they don't have an amount that they've approved, then you can still sign a contract, but we can't pay the bill until we know that they've been approved by the Cultural Council, that the amount, the dollar amount has been approved.
All right. Yeah, because I know, like, even with the marching band, they haven't, they voted to have the marching band, but they didn't, do they have to also vote on the rate for the marching band?
Yeah, they're supposed to be voting everything they spend.
So that's not occurring?
Okay. All right. So apparently, these contracts were signed by a member of the Cultural Council back in October, at which point I said to them, those contracts are not legal because that person doesn't have the authority to bind the town in a legal contract. Only the Select Board do, depending on the circumstances.
Okay.
So for instance...
And that's a big contract, right, for 2100?
So that's why we have them in front of us today.
Okay. So I'll vote on it, but it's going to need to be, they're going to need to get their ducks in a row.
Yes.
Okay, so...
Back to the vote.
Back to the vote. So we have a motion, an amendment, and a second. So first of all, let's vote on the amendment to include the deposit in the balance payment relative to the gun club as part of the primary motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, on the primary motion to approve the contracts with the stipulations added, all in favor?
And give her approval to sign it?
Yeah, if we approve the concept of the contract, she has, she already has our delegation to sign it once they're met. Aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Let's go. All right. Employees' staff evaluation discussion. I actually asked for this to get put on the agenda. Fundamentally, I mean, probably in 10 years, we haven't complied with either our personnel handbook or best practices to do evaluations for the town staff, right? I wanted to propose that we try to re-energize that concept as part of the communication obligations, I feel, that management has with employees, period, regardless of what industry you're in, even though municipalities are not a corporation. It's still good to talk to people about what the expectations are and how to do it.
I know, Talcilla says you're incorporated, so I'm going with...
Well, there you go. So we're incorporated, but not a corporation, so...
Is that to be our responsibility?
No.
So, no, so not predominantly. So fundamentally, and if you want to talk to it, you can, but, I mean, the way I understand the bylaw, each supervisor would have...
I don't believe it's a bylaw, it's in the employee handbook.
Yeah.
And it's a very important distinction.
Yep.
Because one can be changed by a vote of the Board of Selectmen, and the other one cannot. It can be changed by a vote of the town meeting.
Yeah.
So it's a very important distinction. But, that being said, it is a good business practice, an employer practice, for the supervisors to do an annual review of the work of the staff. And then if you would like to broaden that, have the boards and committees that oversee the departments do a review of the department heads. Now, I don't know if you can do that with elected boards, they don't necessarily have any staff.
Right. Well, and it's kind of, it's kind of a little bit of a catch-22, because we are a decentralized government. So hypothetically, like, and I'm just trying to think of a good example, so Highway functionally reports directly to us, so we would probably, like, I would presume that you would help us draft it, but fundamentally, it would be coming from the board.
Right, but you would be reviewing Ryan, and Ryan would be reviewing the rest of his people.
So have you done any reviews on department heads as a town administrator?
I did at Amy's six-month window. I did hers. So that's the only one that I've done.
I mean, I know traditionally, probably the Select Board did it, but since hiring a town administrator, are they supposed to handle that part of it?
Well, that depends, because every town administrator position is different, because this isn't a position that was created by Charter, nor was it a creation by bylaw, nor are the duties defined in contract. Those are the three ways that you can, primary ways. And the job description does not...
Leaves it nebulous.
Not give me...
Does not give her supervisory...
The charge or supervisory authority to do that.
Gotcha.
So, like I said, what I would suggest is that each department head do their own staff, do their own people.
Report to them.
And then the board that oversees that department...
Does the sequence.
Would be requested to do the supervisor. So the Water Commission would do Dennis, Dennis would do Holly, the Chief of Police would do the officers, you would do the chief.
Right.
I would say that you would also do Ryan as well, and myself.
Yep.
I could do the treasurer, or you could do the treasurer. I would do the administrative staff and the custodial staff. And Mike would do his people.
Right.
If he wanted to, because he's elected.
If he chooses to, because he's elected, so we don't really have any...
Brenda has no one. And she's elected, so there's, you can do a review on her, but you have no authority to do that. The assessors would do the principal assessor, the principal assessor would do his clerk. So, like Beth says, it's very decentralized.
Yeah.
So, and functionally, this time around, we would be doing it against job descriptions, but I'd like to also, I'd like to set kind of like a 90-day target to have, one, have the reviews done against their current job descriptions, and two, to set goals for the coming fiscal year relative to performance related to those goals, or related to those job descriptions. It seems like a good way to start off a fresh year would be to actually start having that type of transparent communication with the town employees.
I agree.
So, but that's my proposal, is basically, set a 90-day, we'll call it target, since we can only enforce it for a certain subset. Request that those boards which have people, that they would be responsible for evaluating, do so. And, you know, I basically like to just keep track of the ones that actually get done, so that even if it's just through, you know, a little bit of public shaming, we can get folks to hopefully come online, so...
So do we have to vote on that, or...
Probably best.
Yeah, probably best. So what I would recommend is that you vote on...
Providing, giving direction to the...
Yeah, in the timeframe. Vote on, you know, putting this out there in the timeframe, and then commit to coming back and seeing how it went.
Yeah.
Okay.
Why don't Tom do the vote?
What's that?
He's going to do the motions.
You can make one.
I can see your brain going, how do I phrase this in emotion? How do I, how do I phrase this in emotion?
All right, I recommend that we request, request all department heads to perform an evaluation of their direct reports by June 15th of this year, and that we request all supervisory boards to review their relevant department heads, and that we direct ourselves to review the department heads that report up through, or to the Board of, the Select Board, again by June 15th. And did that cover it?
It sounds like it, yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's a wrap. So next is approving the Select Board minutes of, the 3223 ones were in your email, did everybody get a chance to review them?
Yes.
Okay.
I did not, I was deep in...
I also sent you the ones from the executive session meeting the other day, I sent them to you, I think, the next day.
Yep.
So those would also be...
And then, so we'll give you guys a couple minutes, or Tom, if you want a couple minutes to scan your...
Yeah, I just need to look at the executive session, I read the other one while Brian was doing his research.
Yeah. And then...
All right, I'm good.
All right. All right, so do I have a motion to accept the, to approve the minutes as written, for 32?
You have that motion?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
I saw, we also had 313 indicators.
For the library?
Oh, that's in the, it's on the diary block, you packet, just to acknowledge.
Oh, that's just acknowledging receipt of?
It's loose on the table.
Okay, so that's acknowledging their receipt of the minutes.
Yeah, that's all that is.
Okay.
So they were sent to Karen, but they were actually supposed to go to Brad, and so Karen thought they were supposed to be on the agenda. Because normally, you don't get the library minutes. Right. So they're on the agenda, although...
And it was already posted, so...
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So it's just saying, hey, we got these things...
So can I get a motion to acknowledge receipt of the minutes from the Board of Trustees, Library Board of Trustees?
You have that motion?
All right.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Holcraft, the floor is yours.
Oh, thank you.
I don't have any...
Glad to see you tonight, Tom, we made it.
I was here last week, too.
I know, I know.
I only missed two weeks ago, I'm sorry, two meetings ago.
Okay.
Sorry, it's hard to make it from Florida.
So, I guess we'll talk about the bylaws.
Sure.
Who's following them, and who's enforcing them, and all that good stuff. Because the first thing I bring up is that you put a non-resident on the Finance Board, or the Advisory Board, whatever you want to call it, and he was a member of your board, if you know that.
Yep.
You put him on six months later, and he's making recommendations for our town financially, and he's not even a resident.
That was entirely my fault, because unless there's a bylaw that says you can't, and I should have checked the bylaws, but I didn't.
Oh, you did.
I didn't. I didn't check the bylaws that the Advisory Board, because I have, all the other towns that I've worked in, they've had other members from outside of town that were on their advisory committees, because they had financial backgrounds.
Gotcha.
So I didn't realize that you had to be a resident to be on the advisory committee, and as soon as we found out, he was asked, he was notified, the advisory committee was notified, and he only attended, I think, two of their meetings. So as soon as he found out...
More than two, but that's...
As soon as he found out, we removed him immediately, as soon as I found out, that same day, actually, which, that was entirely my fault.
But the Select Board, you guys voted him in, you guys took a vote that night to put him on the board.
Yep, absolutely.
We did, we made, that was, that was, that was not correct, that was our mistake.
Okay, so...
And once...
Try to be up on the law, bylaws, you know? Because other people are being asked to follow them, so you have, you guys are the, you guys are the leaders, so you should...
Agreed.
And I know you knew, so I understand that, too, but...
Well, once we identified the issue, then it was remediated, so...
Yeah, I mean, that issue was resolved.
Yep.
I brought it to, me and Kelly talked about it, and it was resolved, so...
Yeah, I think while you were still talking to me, I was typing the email, you're done, sorry, my bad, I should have never done that.
Second of all, there's a lot of other bylaws in the town right now being violated by certain employees, board members, et cetera, et cetera. I'm not going to mention names, but I think you should look into it and see what's going on here, and something should be done about it, some action...
Well, which bylaws are you talking about, Mr. Holcraft?
Well, one of them is an employee individual that's actually an elected official, and they're not even living in town, and they're on the board, I think, and that's, I know when, I got accused of that, it was a big to-do, but whenever anyone else does it, it's okay, you know?
Who's elected that doesn't live in town?
Well, I'm not going to, the person's on here...
Well, can you tell me after, so I know? Because I can't...
Yeah, but I don't want to say it, you know?
Okay.
The person's on here, I don't think that's fair.
All right.
You know, but I think that's, you know...
Well, I think that's a legitimate open meeting topic, isn't it?
It is, but it is, we can't, like, we can't hide the name of the person, but if he's not willing to tell us the person in the open meeting, doesn't mean we can't still act on it. Then that's his call, he has a right to say what he wants to say.
Yeah, my question is, how are we...
How are we supposed to know?
Yeah.
Well, you have to, you have to work on that.
Yeah.
I understand, but the more specifics you can give us, the faster we can take action on it.
Right.
If you make it too vague, we might, we might miss it, we might take too long...
But before we take too much action on it, you don't have the authority to act on anybody who's elected. The most you can do is report it to the state, you know?
Yes.
Amen.
So there isn't really a lot of authority you have to do anything about it.
Right, I just came, I came up here to talk about the by, the bylaws, and that was an example, you asked me for an example, what was being followed.
Okay.
And that's something that you guys have to take action on, because it is one of our bylaws.
Well, actually, what, I think if you actually listen to what Kelly just said, is that we may not actually be able to take action, we may only have the capability of reporting it to the state, because for elected officials, because we have a decentralized form of government, unlike if you have a mayor or city council and that, that type of construct, we might not be able to take direct action if the townspeople...
No, that's not how it works, because I lived in town, and you remember when your select, Selectman said that, he wasn't, I was not living in town, and I was living in town, and they did take action.
Well, that's, that was for an appointed position, not an elected position. Yes?
Appointed or elected, but an elected is a bylaw in our town, and that's when you people have to take action on it.
So that's actually a state law, not a bylaw?
Right.
That's why we'd have to notify the state.
Can you cite us the bylaw, specific bylaw that you feel...
I don't have a fund, but...
Again, that would be helpful.
I'm sure Kelly can pull it right up, you know?
But you're the one who's saying the bylaws are being violated, which tells me that you have reviewed the bylaws, and you know which ones are being violated, and coming here without that information makes it harder for us to take action on your consent.
So the bylaw states that if, in the town of Brookfield, you have to live in town to be on an elected board.
Okay.
That's the gist of the law.
Okay.
Now, if you want me to get that for you in writing, I can do that for you.
I think that's, that's probably sufficient guidance.
Right.
And actually, the only, and the only, the only authority we have for a violation of a bylaw, if I remember correctly, is we can ask the chief to issue a civil citation of, I think, $100 is the maximum penalty that we're allowed to inflict, according to our town bylaws.
So, I'm not going to say that it's not there, because I haven't looked for it.
Okay, oh, I know it's there.
When I, when I looked in the bylaws, and I did a search for anything to do with being a residence or anything like that, there's nothing in this bylaw that addresses any elected position in the town's bylaw. But it is a state law, and that actually outranks the bylaws, so we need to...
Right, the state will override what we have, that's correct.
Right, so you give me some more information later, and I'll see what we can do to make sure that that is, that is rectified.
Okay, sounds good. I like that. All right, so you're going to follow up on bylaws and make sure, okay?
Are there any others that you're aware of that you...
Not right, not right, no, but I will be bringing up some other ones in the future for you.
Okay.
I just wanted to make and see, making sure that you people are the ones that are in charge and supposed to be leading, so we should be making sure that they are all being followed. Public access.
Hmm.
I've been told many times, it's been over four years now, this thing's been off, all the equipment's broken, all this, that, and the other, it's, no. Just a certain individual didn't want to continue doing it, and it's still off, and it's a disservice to the town's residents.
Mm-hmm.
And I want to know when we're going to get this thing back on? And Charter pays us every year, exorbitant dollars, to keep this studio running with equipment and manpower. And town, this town has voted two years ago, monies to make sure that the thing would get running again, and it hasn't happened.
So let me tell you what I've done since I started here. We've advertised for the position, so that we could get the cable, we need somebody to get into the studio, and so we were going to hire somebody to do that. I've advertised in the paper, I've advertised on Indeed, I've advertised on the town website, I've advertised on the state website. I have received one applicant, and only one applicant, which we went through the whole process of getting... process of getting wage approval, and we went through the process of getting a job description, and we, he went up to the studio, and he met with the, and we had him appointed, and he knew exactly what he was getting into, and when we said, okay, when can you start? He said, I'm not going to do it unless you give me double what you're asking, what you're offering. And I said, we don't have the authority to do that. I can't just double the pay. That would have changed all of the advertisements, right? If I could give him double what it was. And so he didn't want the job, and he didn't take it. So that's, that was, I don't remember how many months ago that was. So I've reached out to Tantascqua to see if they have anybody who's interested in their tech program, and they referred me to Stirbridge, who I recently reached out to Stirbridge to talk to them, because they have an outside company. Now I'm looking at trying to find an outside company to come and run it, because we can't find a human being who wants to do this.
Well, we have a committee. We have two, three people on that committee still.
There's only one person on the committee, and it's Sharon.
Yeah, I thought there was another person on it as well.
I don't believe, I don't believe so. Yeah, I don't believe that they're still on it. So I have contacted the student who's interested. So we're going to see if we can get her in there and get her trained to start doing this, but I can't create a human being that, to do the job.
I don't think in a studio, to do what we need to be done is going to be acceptable for the town. We need something.
I understand that, but nobody wants the job. Nobody wants to do it. I don't, I don't know how I'm supposed to create somebody to fill a position that nobody is, is interested in.
Well, we've got to have some kind of, some kind of, we voted monies in.
We did.
Okay.
So, I mean, do we need to double, do we need to pay them $50 an hour to do it?
How much?
Well, they, they wouldn't do it for $23 or $25 an hour, so, and he wanted double. So do I got to, do we need, now have to do $50 an hour?
No, I think, I think you have Stirbridge, I'm familiar with what Stirbridge does. They do live, with the residents, and you can even call in and talk, talk to the Selectman sort of nights. But when are we, so are you working with them, trying to see what that?
I have, I have correspondence out to them, but I haven't received a reply. So my plan is that next Monday is I'm going to call them to see if maybe my email went into their spam folder. But I was given their name by the tech teacher at Tantascqua to, to talk to Stirbridge. And if I need to, I'll drive to Stirbridge and see if I can talk to somebody and find out what, because I was told they have two different companies that do it. If we can find a company to outsource it to.
We have the monies.
Yeah, we do.
Absolutely, we have the money. We just got to find somebody to do the work.
Mm-hmm. That's why when we voted the money last year at the, at the town meeting, and you questioned the way I wrote the Warren article, why does this say salary and, and payroll? Because we did 20 for the cable coordinator, remember? And then we did an additional 70 for equipment plus.
Services.
Services plus payroll. So that we, within the 20 for a year, it didn't break out to enough hours to get the job done at any more than, I think, 23 or 25. I think it's $23 an hour. I can't really remember off the top of my head. I have the option of, of snagging some of that 70 and using it toward payroll, but I don't have the town's permission to raise the salary yet. So nobody wants to do it for $20,000 a year. So that's what we have to look at, is, can we get a company in to do it for 20? Because they're just.
Economies of scale, fundamentally.
Right.
There's companies that do this for the, like you said, for Stirbridge and other towns?
Yes, I just need their names.
So I'll get the name if they need it.
Would you? I would love that. I would appreciate that so much.
I'll ask them myself.
Yeah, that's what I was just saying. I'll drive down there if I have to. But yeah, so I just found out that they're, and I, and I reached out to Brimfield, and Brimfield, it's the same person that refused the job here, so that was a dead end, so.
Is it a requirement or something?
Is what a requirement?
Is it a requirement for it to be on television, or? It's just that we receive money?
No, we, we receive, we receive money from, from Charter to.
So we should be using it, is what you're getting at?
To provide that service, and we're not.
Is that money still piling up? Kelly?
Well, we, as long as we're not, it's still, yeah, we're still receiving funds from them, and because the contract is coming up, if we don't use those funds, they have no reason to give us funds in the future.
Yeah.
So I would like to see them get expended properly to get this up and running, and I swear that I have been working on this. I just haven't found a human being willing to do it, so.
So we, well, we were talking about getting new equipment, I mean.
We did.
Keep hearing, get new equipment, get new equipment, I mean, but you get the equipment, and then no one's running the show over there in the studio.
You're absolutely right.
I mean, you don't need, I mean, we've had, I, when I was on the committee, we had junky equipment, and we made sure it was up every weekend. If there was a problem, we had Charter come in and help us fix it. And they get manpower to come in and, and they help us fix, you know?
Yeah.
But, you know, fix our equipment, whatever. And now we get new equipment, and then by that time, we said, oh, we need new equipment.
So I don't know about running the cable channel itself, but we do have somebody now that's going to be editing the videos and putting them up on YouTube, which is better than nothing, but.
YouTube's been down, too?
YouTube's not down.
Well, it's not, it's not that it's down.
It's nobody's uploaded any video.
Yeah, we have somebody who's going to be working on the background.
When was the last time it was on YouTube? September? Someone said, is that true?
Oh, gosh, no, it was 2021.
Yeah.
It's been that one?
Been a year, yeah.
Yeah. I think the last meeting I saw up there was 2021. So, but like I said, we do have somebody that is, is just starting, and they're going to be editing the, the meetings and putting them up there, so that we're going to catch up on YouTube.
What do you mean, editing them?
Well, they need to have, like, the beginning part put in, like, this is the Selectman's meeting, or this is the town meeting. That's the only editing that gets done. They don't do anything to the middle part.
Right, okay.
And then, this is the end, here's some music, la, 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 that kind of stuff.
Tune in next week, same Brookfield time.
Same Brookfield station.
Yeah, right.
So, okay, so do you have some kind of a timeline here, or are we going to wait another four or five years?
You're not going to wait four or five years?
Well, you're, you're being serious, but you're not. So you're also, you're, you're totally cutting out the portion that, for two of the four years, all the meetings were on Zoom, all of them were recorded, and all of them were available through links on the website. So let's at least take that off the plate. During that same period of time, you couldn't get a technician for love or money to address some of the connectivity issues that we had over at the school.
Let's not forget that these were the COVID years.
Right. So, so I just, I just, I just, you know, I appreciate your love of hyperbole, John, but please, you know, let's, let's keep in mind that it's not as simple as you would like to portray it, okay? So I just want to put that out.
I've been in the committee for seven years, and it wasn't a big to-do, you know?
But you didn't have COVID during those seven years, right?
Okay, but we can't.
So we get 20, 21.
The first two years, the first two years, that's the problem.
It's been off almost five years.
Right.
20 and 21.
It's been off almost five years.
And, and I'm not, not disclaiming that. I'm just saying that it's not the simple thing, and when we came back from COVID, getting people out of their houses has been very, very trying, very trying. We've got a huge gap in employment. We've got, it's just, it's not as easy as it was before, because people don't want to come back out and work out of their house. There are more and more people working in their houses.
We can't use the pandemic constantly as excuses.
I'm not using the pandemic as an excuse for prior years, but that is definitely hindrance in finding somebody.
Well, I'm going to go to Stirbridge, and I'm going to get.
You've got three minutes.
Okay, I'm going to go to Stirbridge, and I'm going to get some names.
Okay.
And phone numbers, and, and then I'm going to come see you personally again.
Okay.
And we'll see if we can get something rolling here.
Okay.
So, and it's been a long time. And one other thing, there's no bylaw committee in town anymore. Is there a reason for that, or?
That was an orange.
Where I always used to have one. Is there a reason why we don't have?
Right now, we're not even able to fill our advisory committee.
Yeah, a lot of committees.
I'm not, I'm not.
We currently have 23 open committee seats.
Yeah.
Not including the bylaw committee. What does the bylaw committee do?
So hypothetically, they advise the Selectman on adjustments that should be made to the bylaws. So that's what we have a town administrator for, and that she's going through, and as a lawyer, going through and reviewing the bylaws and providing us recommendations, so.
That's why, that's why.
That's true, Kelly?
Yeah, that's why you had so many changes last year. All of the changes, other than the citizens' petition, were put in there because of my reviewing the bylaws.
So I haven't been, I haven't been too cranked up about trying to fill the bylaw committee where we have a lawyer to help us review our bylaws and the recommendations.
And when I am made aware of one that needs a change, it gets put in.
Right, to you?
Yes.
To your attention?
Yes, it does, yes. And then I do what I can to write or rectify, compare it against the existing bylaws, so we don't create an inconsistency. And that's, that's literally where all the bylaw changes came from last year.
Okay. All right, well, I'll do my part down at Stirbridge for you, and then.
That would be great. I would really appreciate that, because I've been struggling with this one.
And if I have to, I'll get you a state bylaw of the elected.
Okay.
Great. Anything else?
So I'll expect to see you on Monday, then, right?
Maybe Tuesday. Mondays are horrible, but I'll try to come in Monday.
Okay, all right. I'm here in the morning.
I'm going to get down, I'm going to get down to Stirbridge and see them first, so that might be Monday I'm going out to see them.
All right, so, so I would.
I'll see you next week or something.
I'll be here on Mon, on Monday morning, and then I have Wednesday, I'm at the municipal law conference all day.
Okay.
So I won't be around Wednesday, but I'll be there Tuesday, and I'll be there for Thursday.
You'll be there when, Tuesday, when?
Tuesday and Thursday I'll be there.
Okay. I will call you first and make sure you're here.
Okay.
Tell you that I have something or I don't.
All right, I appreciate that.
Okay, all right. All right, thanks.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, Tom.
Not going to thank them, too?
Ooh, you're cool. Rest of the what? You feel special, Tom? All right, thank you.
My mother always said I was special.
All right.
The budget, oh, my God, you're excellent.
The budget.
Oh, goodness. Yeah, I'm going to teach you all how to format an Excel.
Oh, you know, I printed myself one out I could read. The problem is, is that we are.
That is a basic.
We are very, very environmentally conscious and thrifty with our paper, okay? And instead of, so like, my version that I printed for myself, that does not have all the columns, it only has the pertinent columns, is 24 pages long, but I can see it.
Kelly, you have my permission to go double-sided and make it a little bigger? Same paper, more legible.
Anywho.
All right, so the last time we talked about the budget.
You got glasses. I was going to.
I may or may not have my.
Without my contacts.
We talked basically about the salary increase.
Yes.
So if we do a 3% salary increase and approve everything else the way it stands, we have $300,000 in excess levy, okay? Because we got some more solid numbers. The insurance didn't come in at 10%, it came in at 8.4%.
That makes a big difference.
So that made a little bit of a dip in it, right?
Kelly, as a, as a baseline metric, what was our excess levy last year?
I don't know that number off the top of my head.
Okay, is that, it's just that tells me how much pressure there is.
I think it was around four.
I was going to say it. I thought it was around four.
Roughly around four, maybe, maybe a little over four.
Okay, I could, I, I, I know I haven't, and I could look it up from my time on advisory last year, but thank you. That's, that tells me what I want to know.
Yeah, roughly around. And another reason that we have excess, and we will have actually more than that, because that does not include new growth or the change in values. So in the, in the spreadsheet that I sent you, my favorite toy, my recap simulator.
Yep.
When you plug in the stuff into the recap sheet, it automatically jumps over to the levy page and gives you the difference. So you can just look at the top of the levy limit page. But I used last year's values, because our values are set, and I used, because I know that those are solid numbers, and they're not going to go down, because the market was still high last year. And I also used the new insurance number.
So theoretically, this number could even be higher with the way real estate values, or that doesn't get.
Well, especially, well, with, well, with new, with new growth.
Yeah.
Well, we have a lot of new growth.
So we, we have a huge amount of new growth, so it's entirely possible.
But is, we don't know if it's taxable new growth. Right? So in order for it to be taxable new growth.
It has to be built by July of last year, kind of thing.
It has to be built by January 1st of this year, of, of last year. January 1st of 2022, because we don't do supplemental.
In the 30, we have 30 new houses that just aren't built, so those aren't even calculated.
Those don't count. Those don't count.
Those will be next year.
Yeah.
So when does the property become taxable?
January 1st of the prior calendar year. So for FY '24, the new growth will be calculated on the January 1st numbers for 2022.
Really? So anything that was, became occupied in, during 2022 doesn't count to the fiscal year '24?
Right, it's calendar, it's calendar. So we're in calendar '23.
Yes.
So new growth is calculated in the prior calendar.
Based off of January '22.
Yes, you can't, so, so, so let's say, for instance, I buy a restaurant, I build a house on January 2nd, 2022. I don't get taxed until 2025.
Okay.
That's if I can, like, you know, Minecraft, World of Minecraft, and I can just build a house in one day and live in it. They might do, so Al might go out and catch things at a certain percentage complete. So those percentage complete would be, so, so on January 1st, something was half-built, he would have the whole value decreased by 50%.
And he's able to tax them on that?
Yes, because that's what's there on January 1st.
Yeah.
And that's typically how it works. There are supplemental assessments allowed, but I don't know if, if Brookfield does them, and I don't, honestly, it came about after I left assessing, so not totally familiar with the way it works, so I don't want to opine as to whether or not it's done yet.
Okay, so, just, just to make sure, I, I want to wrap my head around this correctly. So if, assuming, assuming that I could build a house in one day.
Yes.
And I built it all on December 31st of 2022. So just, just built it. When would, and so, and so on January 1st, Al comes by, and it's all done, and it's, I've got my strip yard, and see, everything's done. When would I get my first tax bill, or when would that shift? When would I get my first tax bill? Or when would that shoot?
So you, the tax bill for something other than the land.
Yeah, yeah, specifically for the, for the changes to the property.
All right, so if it's there on January 1st of 2022.
Yes.
Then it goes into the taxes for FY '25. Twenty, yeah, '25, because 2022 is calculated in 2023. Which is actually FY '24.
Got it. So effectively, so the new growth we're talking about.
Making myself nauseous.
So the new growth we're talking about in context of the fiscal year '24 budget is all stuff that was built in 2020?
No, in 2022, because it's calculated for 2023, which is actually fiscal 2024.
But I just thought, I thought something that was built on on December 31st, 2022, wasn't going to get a tax bill until.
2024.
Until, oh, which is.
Because it's fiscal year.
I thought you said fiscal year '25.
No, '24. If I did, I misspoke, it's '24.
Okay.
So new growth as of last January.
So it's effectively a, if it's built, if it's done on December 31st, it's an 18-month lag?
Close to that, yeah. I think so, yeah. I think that's roughly correct.
All right, so the fiscal, so the fiscal year '24 new growth is what was built in '22 and this year's fiscal '23 new growth is what was built in '21. So, built in '22, shows up in new growth, I'm sorry, if it was built in '22, it'll be fiscal year '24 new growth. Bag everything up a year, if it's built in '21, it was fiscal year, it was fiscal year '23 new growth.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, just wanted to make sure I had that right. I always thought new growth was more forward-looking, but.
Well, like I said, they, they allow supplemental now, so they changed the rules of what you can assess and I don't know if Brookfield follows that. It would change the answer completely if they do.
And Al snuck out while we were talking.
That son of a gun.
That's okay.
Okay. So I did the three, like I said, I put in the 3% for salary that you had discussed and then just put everything across exactly the way it showed up on the budgets. I think there might be a couple that I fiddled with, but that is. When I say fiddle, it just. There would be reasons and there would be in my notes why I would have, I would have made a different recommendation than what was requested. But I don't see any off the top of my head here. So I don't know if you, how you wanna do this, do you wanna, do you wanna go through each department and vote yea or nee? Or and look at their expenses? Because you voted the salary, so how do you wanna handle? Oh, I did level fund the, like, the assistant inspector wages instead of what, what was requested?
Was that the one that was requested down?
So we have, we have.
Which inspector?
So it will start with the building inspector, right? And that's account number 241 was where they start. So if you look over to the far left, you can see the account numbers, it's so much easier to do it that way. For me, anyway, I don't know if that works for you guys. So we have the building inspector, which that got the 3%, but then I level funded the assistant. I did the same with plumbing, I did the same with wiring, I did the same. I level funded the stipend for the emergency management because that went up from $400 to a fat, to 18, so that was a very substantial jump.
You're talking about the emergency, the EMA stipend?
Yes.
Because I'm showing that going up. I saw a 1960 request in fiscal year '24 against an 1800 fiscal year '23 budget.
But look at FY '22.
No, I, I, yeah, there was, I know there was a big jump from '22 to '23.
Right, so I recommended, I recommended level funding that.
Okay.
These are, these are the changes that I made. There's, I don't know that they're on.
No, they're not, they're not.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not, I'm not seeing level fund.
We didn't get, we didn't get the current copy and I, that's why I was on my phone, I wasn't being rude, I was looking for a few.
No, I, I thought that I sent this to you last week, actually, because that's when I did it.
Okay.
Was it last week?
I thought that I had sent you the new one, but maybe I didn't send it. Because I, you hadn't voted on anything, so all I did was plug in the numbers they asked for and I'm just telling you what I level funded.
So, so the thing I would say is that I would, I would typically, and this is just my perspective on it and based on my time on advisory. Typically, we, we did not level fund the assistants, we gave them the raise as well because they're functionally hourly workers even though it shows as a stipend. It's not like paid out quarterly, it's paid if they go on-site.
And I understand that. And I did that with the animal inspector because, no, I didn't, I level funded the animal inspector in my, in my spreadsheet, but I understand that, but you, you have inspectors that go out maybe three times a year. What's 400 divided by three? That's one hell of an hourly wage.
Right, but I thought, I thought we have set hourly wages for them in the.
No, we don't.
We don't.
No. They're, they're paid.
They're paid that stipend whether they go out or not.
Whether they go out or not, they just come in and collect it. Or they, it's, it's asked for by their department head. So that's why I level funded it, because it seems like a really well-paid, thanks for being on call.
Okay.
No, I mean, that's the risk, it's on call.
Right, exactly, exactly. I'll double-check to see if there's an hourly rate, but I don't think there is.
Double-check, because I thought that, I thought all of them, they only got paid if they submitted for it based on actually executing some of the work. That was my understanding.
Okay, I'll check, I'll double-check on that.
Assistant's work.
I'll double-check on that, because if you look at the prior years, nobody's taken.
They just haven't used it?
They haven't used it, nobody's had to go out, so nobody's taken any money.
Yeah.
So.
That's why I said I thought that they were basically only paid if they submitted and I thought it was some, some rate that we were paying them. And that that budget was basically budget for that hourly rate to come out of.
Yeah, I didn't. I haven't seen that, because like I said, they haven't gone.
Yeah, I would just check with the primary inspectors and see how that's typically.
I'm gonna check the payroll instead of checking with the inspectors, because payroll will have the records going back to 2015 and who knows if they're actually gonna even remember.
However you wanna handle it. Okay. So.
Because based on what I've seen in past budgets, it looks like nobody's using it anyways.
Yeah, that's, now that's entirely possible and I would not nay say that in any way, shape or form, so. Besides putting in the 3% for the, for the employees, was there, were there any other changes that you had made?
No, actually.
Okay.
No, I did the 3%. And I only did it to get a total, so you could have an idea of what would happen with the levy limit, because you get to vote on all of this stuff. This was just to give you an eye, a ballpark.
I understand that, thank you.
Of what it was, I wasn't like saying do this or that, so.
Right. So how do you gentlemen wanna do it? Do we wanna go through, start with our own budget and work our way down through to see if there's any questions, concerns, or adjustments that we wanna recommend?
Board of Health, the Board of Health clerk.
Right.
They need a 15-hour-a-week clerk, 10 to 15 hours a week. It can't be absorbed by the Board of Health, by the all-boards clerk, because that job wasn't intended to be a full-time position.
Yep.
So soon out of the chute.
That's right.
Supposed to be part-time.
Yep.
And the work that, that is being asked to be absorbed is, is.
In excess of what the person has available.
Because, because there was a Board of Health member in the town hall who did a phenomenal amount of legwork and a lot of, dealt with a lot of people and dealt with a lot of requests over the phone and walk-in people. So those hours weren't actually calculated, because they weren't paying for it.
We didn't know what the hours were because they were never documented.
The prior chairman did a phenomenal amount of work, the current chairman's doing the same, she's doing a lot of work as well. But that was also something, those hours weren't calculated. And Brianna, their clerk, this was something she did full-time as her job in another town, so she could kinda cross and, and do some extra for Brookfield while she was at her other job, because we shared a health agent and we shared a this and a that, so she could get little things done. So those hours weren't accounted for. And now what's happened is we shifted the responsibility to the all-boards clerk, not realizing that those hours were even in existence. Until the job started getting done. Now the job is taking between 15 and 19 hours a week just for Board of Health. So it can't be absorbed, so they do absolutely need a Board of Health clerk, they need their own clerk.
So is the $6,400 plus whatever, 3% enough?
No, 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 because if you do the hourly rate.
Okay.
Which is $19 an hour, times 15.
That's what I was gonna do, yeah.
Times 52.1. That's what you need for an annual salary.
That's in the 15, the $17,000 range, I think?
Right, roughly.
Yeah, it's 14.8.
So.
So call it 15.
So call it 15.
Yeah, if you do it 15 hours, if you do it 10 hours a week, and I don't know if they'll find somebody who's interested in a 10-hour-a-week job, I think a 15-hour-a-week is more appealing.
I think we're gonna run into the same issue.
No, I think, I think, I think, I think a 15-hour-a-week job is possible because they can do it basically, it's probably no longer correct term to use, but it's like a mother's hours position.
Yeah.
Fundamentally.
Yeah.
So it's the, I can do it between the hours of like nine and two, I can put the kid on the bus, I can get, get them off.
Right, and, and they, you have to figure they have, because the Board of Health is now gonna be meeting twice a month, so they're gonna have two nights, two nights a month that they're gonna be out.
Yeah.
So it definitely needs more than what we can unfortunately, what we can provide, because we didn't budget for an additional full-time person in the extra benefits.
Right. So, and I, I think it makes more sense to get an additional part-time person than it does to.
So that was one of, that's the, that's one of the changes, because you asked me and I was like, I don't wanna forget to tell you that I.
Right.
I put that in there as a placeholder until you decide what you wanna do for them. And I sent that email recommending.
Are we gonna be able to find somebody for $19 an hour?
I don't know.
I don't think so.
I don't know.
Not that you can do all this other gig work for more money, but we'll see.
I mean, you may wanna offer more, I don't know what, what a Board of Health clerk's rate is. And this just developed over the last week and a half.
Can we, how hard would it be to find out, like, what the local market rate is on that?
I could ask again.
I'm sorry.
No, my people are like, why don't you just ask us for everything, Kelly?
Well, then, but then you would get to talk to them so much.
Send me your budget.
Send me everything you have, I want all 133 of you to send me. Your, your budget broken down by line item and I, I want, I don't want low sums in salaries, I want hourly wages.
Sorry.
Sorry, that's all right. And could you please tell me any contracts and collective bargaining agreements as well? It's been my week, that's been my week.
And there are a couple things I'm gonna need to know next week, can you tell me them in advance?
Yes, I don't know what they are yet, so. So I haven't, I sent an email to the Chair of the Board of Health explaining that the job couldn't absorb the Board of Health hours and why. And when I sent the email, I went, I wrote it and edited and wrote it and edited and wrote it and edited, it sounded good and I sent it. And then I realized after getting a.
Turse?
That's good, response. That it sounded like we were pulling the clerk out from under them, which was not the intent, but she cannot work any more than four hours a week, because then she goes over the.
The threshold.
The threshold and we can't do that. So Maureen is supposed to come in and see me next week and we're gonna discuss it. And I don't know what the Board of, the Board of Health, I told them, you know, that you really need somebody for, for at least 15 hours a week. So they may come back and say, this is what we wanna do and this is what we wanna pay. I just put that in there as a placeholder.
Okay, so when you have that conversation, in the interim, I hate to ask, do we have any budget anywhere that we could potentially get somebody in through a temp agency for like two days a week?
Well, certainly. So now, now we're crossing over into this is not my job.
And that's gonna cost more than 20.
Because I don't have, I don't hire for the Board of Health, they're elected.
Oh, that's true.
That's their job. And I did say that I would help them advertise and explain, you know, how to go about finding somebody.
Got it. And that's okay to say it's not your job.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm okay with that, I just, I forget very easily.
No, that's okay.
I mean, when you, and these aren't benefit-eligible positions.
Correct.
I mean, market rate is almost 25 to 30, it's.
If you, if you don't, if you don't, if you're not providing benefits, it's 25.
Yeah, it's bonkers right now.
I was, and that was the number in my head, was it anything less than 25, we're not gonna find somebody.
No.
But.
I've had personal troubles.
That's what we're paying our all-boards clerk right now, it's 19 an hour. So we, we need to, that's why I use that as a base pay, which is actually more than they were paying Brianna with all of her experience.
I know, that's crazy.
As I say, no, we're not gonna lower her pay to do more work.
That's gonna create a, I didn't realize you're paying the all-boards clerk banking, but that's gonna create, that's our issue if she knows someone else gets out at 25.
And, and she will, because this is all public work.
Right.
So. I don't see, I'm gonna keep looking to make sure I didn't change anything.
What's that?
I'm gonna keep looking to make sure I didn't change anything else, to keep my, just to remind me that it's something you need to talk about.
Okay. All right, what, what did the insurance come back as, just so that we have record of it?
All right, so the insurance came back as.
And was it the health or was it the general?
This is the medical insurance. The, the general insurance, the general liability insurance is going up 10%. Maya told us that. I don't have it in writing yet, but that's what Maya told us.
Okay.
It's going up 10% because of the roof claims.
Right. So group.
The group health insurance is going up 8.4%. So it's going from 691 to 749.
749 or 39?
49. 749044 is 8.4% of what we budgeted last year, but if you look at the prior year, you'll see that we level funded it because we had, we didn't have to pay as much. So when I did the math on what we're paying monthly.
No, I'm gonna tell you what, what happened was the outsourced treasurer came up with a ridiculously high number through some bizarre calculations that we, that, I gave him an arbitrary number to cut it down to that was still way over-budgeted, but I was at least able to get everybody to align on it.
So if we, if we look at what it was the prior year and what we spent.
Yep.
There's well over $100,000.
Gap, yeah.
So this year, because it went up last year, I think it was like 7% or something like that. We level funded it, what we paid out and what we're scheduled to pay gives us like about a $38,000 buffer.
Okay.
So if we do this again
Yeah.
with the 8.4, that will give us another like $38,000 buffer in case somebody jumps on in the middle of the year.
Yep, perfect.
And that'll cover one family, roughly. A little more than one family, you could probably do one family, one single.
One individual, yeah. Okay. That's a good plan. I like that plan.
So that's where the 749044 comes from.
Yeah. Okay.
The general insurance, we have that number from Maya, I think. Is that the one that's the 168?
Yes. And by the way, we did have that other gentleman that was going to compare prices.
Yeah, we're, we're looking at other prices.
He sent me an email about a week and a half ago, said that he was working on it and had already said so.
Okay. In case we get a jump ship, but we've gotta do it prior to May if we're gonna jump ship.
Okay. So one question that I do have, and this is something that, that, that we talked about, at least hypothetically. Do we want to start to cover more of the employee portion of the healthcare, in which case we have to increase that number another 5%? If we were gonna start to move from 60% coverage to something higher to be closer to near peer in terms of of benefit coverage, since if we're gonna hold on a, a 3% raise, did we wanna look at the other benefits that we offer and cover a slightly higher percentage?
I'm open to it, but I, I'd like to get a, I'd like to wrap my head a little better around the impact on the, of this on our levy headroom slash total levy amount.
Well, so we've got $300,000 in excess levy.
That's going down and.
What do you mean it's going down?
The, the levy headroom is going down, it was 400,000, it was about 400,000 last year from what you said earlier.
But the budget that we were presented with, we didn't have any levy headroom and we didn't have any room at all.
Okay, that's, I, I understand, but fundamentally, the, the increase in the levy drives the increase in the, the tax bills of the citizens of the town. And so I'd like, my, I'd like to keep that in mind and have an understanding of where we are in terms of the budget before we commit to making changes to that.
So I have a spreadsheet for you to wrap your head around, that Amy did today, which shows the town costs at 60, 65, 70, 75, and 80. I also have a list of what all the other towns are and what they're offering, which is what you asked me to do.
That is what I asked you to do.
So.
Do you have copies for all of us?
I can, Karen, we're gonna, these are regular papers, should be no problem. We struggled last week with the.
With the big paper?
Yeah.
Kelly, that's just the sheet showing how much the insurance budget amount, we would need to budget for insurance based on a 60, 65, 70.
Nope, it breaks it down by what our costs are and the employee costs are.
Okay.
And it breaks it down with a, with a, what we currently have, which is a single and a family plan. And it also breaks it down with a spouse plus one plan.
And so you compared this to what other.
We've been busy.
And you've compared this to the other towns and what their cost sharing?
I have a list of what the other towns are cost sharing.
So I think the other Lynch pin to that discussion.
They're all Maya.
Where are they, where are they with wages? You know, are they keeping wages down and keeping this high or? You know, I don't know how to.
Well, the, well, the.
I know what you're asking me.
The percentage share has, has been very consistent in those other towns for a number of years. They went up a number of years ago, or else they started higher than we.
Right.
And then she did have, she did provide us the wage information in the previous meeting, so in terms of like what percentages. so in terms of like what percentages.
And we're on par.
The 3% is kind of...
3% is kind of what everybody's doing.
It's pretty much where folks are at.
Oh, no, I know that, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Two and a half to 3%. The question that I have is since we would, since we are staying on par and we did the wage adjustments for the Collins Center previously, right, the only other place we have to move potentially, if we, if we think it's the right thing to do, would be to, in some planned manner, take a look at increasing the town cost share on the insurance.
Because I'm looking for my little piece of paper that was with all my other pieces of paper. It appears to be with all other pieces of paper.
And by giving us the number of employees, they're functionally giving us a way to calculate that end number.
I don't have the little slip of paper in here, it must still be on my desk.
But functionally, I mean, you can also take the gross numbers.
Add 5%.
Well, no, it would be, yeah.
So...
So it would actually be, 5% is whatever, it's one, it's 5 divided by 60, so it's 112, so we'd actually have to do the math a little bit more complicated than just 5%. A little bit, it's more than that actually. It's like 12% increase in the budget to do a 5% increase in what we cover. So I didn't necessarily want to vote it tonight, but I wanted to bring it up tonight to think about in terms of the budget fundamentally.
So we have, I have Spencer, West Brookfield, East Brookfield, North Brookfield, Warren, I was going to ask Sturbridge, and I know Hollins. And the lowest one is Brookfield at 60, 40. The next lowest is 75, 25, which I believe is West Brookfield. North Brookfield offers 70, 30 up to 90, 10, depending on how long you've worked there. And the other ones were 75, 25. And I'll find the list, I don't know where the list is, but it was, I thought I had it in this pile, but apparently must have left it upstairs at my desk.
Okay. So again, I wasn't planning on deciding today, but I wanted to have the dialogue around it today.
Okay.
So...
Have we ever had a review from the employees to their opinions or anything like that?
So at the last department head meeting when we had the discussion regarding wages, folks had submitted for the federal COLA and we weren't going to do the federal COLA because it was such an outrageous COLA this year. And the other years, we have exceeded the federal COLA by quite a bit, right? One of the things that came out was that it has not, it has not passed the employee notice that you could hypothetically go to work for another town for the same pay and take home another couple hundred bucks a week because of the fact that the town is covering more health insurance. Right. So, and fundamentally, they just said, please consider it. It wasn't a demand, it was a, you know, if you really, you know, if you really are going to walk the walk on pay parity, it really is package parity. And currently, they don't have package parity. The two changes that came up, or two requests that came up during the department head meeting, was to at least have some plan to increase the healthcare percentage and to do the vacation, do changes to the vacation portion of the bylaw. Because the amount of vacation that folks get is a pittance compared to what industry standard is.
Mm-hmm.
So, so those, in the context of the budget, those were the two things that came out of the department head meeting. Because there is some indirect financial impact of the vacation request as well, but it's indirect, not direct. So, are there any other portions of the budget that you think we need to have a significant discussion on until we start to get the numbers more finalized?
No, not really.
Is there any?
We had, Brad was going to go speak to the library and the...
Elementary school.
The elementary school. And then Tom was going to talk to Board of Health.
Do I need to talk to Highway?
No, I thought you were going to Highway. Who else was doing, who was doing Highway? Did we have anybody talk to Highway? Highway's budget isn't like crazy.
No, I'd like to...
I was going to talk to the Highway, but it was more about, the note I have is about the...
Tree plan?
The pavement plan.
No.
Pavement management.
Yeah, I'd also like to find out how he plans to support the new tree warden's tree plan as well. Because I think we need to...
So the tree warden is planning on going out to bid and hiring with that money and doing, and implementing his plan.
You haven't had any response from the email the other day from the tree warden in regards to Allen Road?
No, not yet, no. One of the things that I would like to see is, not for this year, of course, because it would be kind of like, you know, put in the, it's a little after the fact. But I think going forward, the departments that have large budgets, not give us a lump sum for their salary. I want a breakdown of each officer, each department worker, what their hourly rate is, what their differential is, what their step is, and how they came up with this giant number.
Ask them. Send out the request. I would prefer to see a bottoms-up on the salaries too. So ask them forward, even though they already submitted their budget.
Oh, okay. Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or do you need a vote for that? I want to see it.
I missed what you said.
Can I get a, can I get a motion to have the department heads...
I'd like a breakdown of all the salaries.
I move that we ask Kelly to request the department heads to provide a bottoms-up summary of the, of the wages requests in their fiscal year 24 budget. Is that what you wanted?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, no, I would like to see that because...
Doesn't advisory already get that?
No, they don't. They get exactly what I've given you guys.
They get a lump sum. And it really should be...
And it's hard to figure out...
Advisory gets it by account number also.
Yeah.
I remember when I was on the event, like we literally were covered pencils, I felt like.
I mean, you, I mean, I know last year when they were asking for increases to the chief's wages, we asked Chief Martell and he explained, like the firefighter's wages went up and a chunk of that was the assistant chief's wages, which is in the firefighter wages. There's no, it's not broken up. He's chief, assistant chief, chief, his pay is buried in with all the worker bees.
Yeah.
Right. So I want to know, because everybody's got different hourly rate. Nobody works for the same pay. And I'm not talking about the fire department in particular, but there's no officers that share the same pay. There's no highway workers that share the same pay.
Yeah.
And so how do, how do we calculate this? How do we know if what, if I'm not going to check their math because, you know, we need...
That's why you went to law school.
Right. Exactly. But it would be good to have those numbers, to have the raw data so that we can just make sure that when they're calculating their percent, they're not just doing a lump percent.
Yeah.
And somebody's at the top of where they're supposed to be in their, in their area and we need to maybe bump somebody up more than somebody else because they're, they should have started higher and they didn't, or, you know, we don't know what anybody's wages are.
Like in personal bylaws, is there like...
The bylaws don't address anything other than the grade of the...
It doesn't have pay scales.
And it says laborer.
It doesn't have pay scales.
It does not. Because we didn't adopt, we didn't adopt the steps from the, or the...
The stepping grade?
Right. The only thing adopted at the town meeting was, was the people, the physicians, laborers for Highway, and they were in groups. So administrative assistants, laborers. And the Collins Center had a range that was valid using old data for 2021. It's now 2023, 2024.
Yeah, and we adjusted, and we adjusted it at the time for COLA since 2021, but we didn't adopt the steps necessarily.
No, not at all.
We did not adopt a step system.
Yeah.
Right.
So, all right, it's better to say we did not retain the step system, because there was a step system that wasn't actually used that was in this town for years prior to the Collins Center piece. But people weren't using the steps, and that's one of the reasons why our salaries started to lag so much, is that because they weren't doing that granular definition and taking into account how many years people had and the like. People were only getting the COLA raise and they weren't getting steps while they were in neighboring communities. So... But anyhow, yeah, so let's go ahead and just ask them to do the math. Doesn't hurt them to do a little math.
All right.
Did you finish, did you finish the bottom now?
We did.
You did, yeah. The, another thing to consider in the budget is the warrant, right? So traditionally, what I've seen in past warrants, so I'm talking behind my hand here, is that you raise an appropriated money for things that should be in a budget, like line painting, buy a car every year for a department. That's a budget thing. So that's fine if you want to continue to do that. And I understand why you do the line painting, and I remember that one because there was some money in the budget and that wasn't on the warrant last year, so it sticks in my head that it needs to be there this year. It's because it rolls over, and line painting can't be done in March when it's snowing and freezing. It has to be done when it's warmer and it may not get done due to timing until after the fiscal year. So that's important that that roll over. However, you need to keep those things in mind when looking at your overall budget. Because that is going to impact how much we're actually raising appropriate.
Absolutely.
Because I always thought we paid for line painting out of free cash, which meant it wouldn't affect raise and appropriate.
Not the warrant articles that I saw.
I mean, it's one of those things, so good practice is, it should be from raise and appropriate because it is a recurring expense and it should be on the operational budget. However, in a really lean year, if we did it as an exception and did it from there, I don't think anybody would lose any sleep over it for the amount of money that it is. But that's, that's more of a judgment column than it is necessarily a policy or a best practice. You know, it's kind of like the fire equipment, one that tends to wind up landing as an article for the same reason that he doesn't want to spend it until he has to, and sometimes you can't get it in depending on stocks and timing of when or do...
Yeah, so those things need to be kept in mind, that they're going to also impact the bottom line.
Yeah. So, all right. Any other budget discussion before we move into executive session? Or do the correspondence move into...
In the next version of the budget, one thing that would really help me is if next to each requested amount, we had a percentage and gave us the percentage change from fiscal year 23. That allows me to sort of stand down and look for the numbers that are, the ones that are having a big impact.
Send me this spreadsheet.
Okay, so you got the spreadsheet, can't you add the column?
Okay. I don't, can I, can I edit the spreadsheet that you sent me?
Maybe not, maybe I locked everything but the one that you played.
Oh. Well, you give me a playground, I can, or...
I might have, I might have.
Can I copy it off?
So, do you want the percentage of what's recommended or what's requested?
I want a percentage of, I want to know the percentage that, of what the department requested, the percentage variance from fiscal year 23, the percentage variance of what we're recommending, and the percentage variance of what advisories recommend.
I'll unlock the spreadsheet.
There you go.
And I can, I can do it real quick. I love spreadsheets.
Okay, beautiful.
There's something wrong.
I cut and paste it.
No, that's okay. I can do the percentages of each, but I can't do the percentage variance.